Eight forty-seven. No action was taken in the executive session. Item F. Consider an act to implement a program for Chana Grove Police Department titled Enhanced Enforcement Program slash EEP.
Yes, sir. We're proposing to use of authorizing additional hours over the above that were allotted for Officer Ron Lucas to enhance patrol in the city of Chana Grove by having a day shift and a night shift all week long and a night shift, a day shift, night shift on Saturday and a night shift on Sunday.
You gonna have two at one time here when they like it?
No.
You and the guy, right?
Not all the time, but I'm not here every day.
Well, you're supposed to be here every day, though.
No, sir. That's not the way it was proposed whenever I was hired. Um, there's gonna be times that I can't be here because of my previous commitments prior to taking this job. There will be a day shift and night shift every day except Sunday, provided we get the number of hours that we need to do that. I will be taking, like we, I discussed with you, some of, some of you last week about doing city ordinance violations, doing the administrative work for the police department and just keeping everything in general. But there will be an officer day and night, six days a week and one at night.
Yeah, I don't know what, you know, it totally looks pretty hard, but that, we're just a small city and we're, we're considering you as the man that works daylight. That's your job, is you enforce ordinance and traffic violation and everything, working eight hours. We understand it gets difficult for you, you know, doctor or whatever, that's fine. But actually, your job, what we're paying you for is an eight-hour day, five days a week.
Glenn, I thought I explained that to you. I did explain that, that he was hired as part-time officer, part-time chief. His hours are part-time. And I explained why, because he had those other commitments. And like tonight, he's here, he, he does other work at night. He's not an eight-to-five shift. And I, I think I talked to you and Dennis Dunk about that at one point and I tried to, I think I went, I explained it to everybody.
I understand you a little bit, but I can't see though where we're gonna hire another person to work with him all day.
That's not, I don't think what he said.
We're not hiring anyone anymore.
We're not hiring anyone to work all day.
He said they're gonna have the day shift.
But we no longer have.
The officers are already here, we're not gonna hire somebody else.
Well, but you're gonna have an officer here during the day with you.
Sometimes, sometimes.
What do you mean by sometime? Now that's what I need to understand.
Cause sometimes he's not going to be here necessarily.
Okay, and then, and the, the other officer works different hours too, so.
Yeah, and he's not gonna be the same officer working that day shift. They're, these two day work.
You're still, you're still two people at one time. This little city cannot handle two officers at one time.
We've been handling.
It's not gonna cost the city any more money.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
No, it's not.
No, it's not. I don't think so.
Sure it is.
Cause we've.
He, if that guy, okay, he gonna say, he gonna pay giving tickets. Well, you could be doing giving them tickets.
Well, Glenn, what he's doing right now, like he said, he's taking care of administrative, which is a lot of work. There's a lot of detail and reports and all kinds of things that they work on getting, working on the policy now, police department policy and procedures, taking care of the, of the reserves, administrative stuff. It's a daily process there, plus he responds to calls, he responds to ordinance violations. He goes around and talks to people about that.
And he has been writing tickets.
He does write tickets and then the impound program is another thing that's brought in more money for the city.
We got him doing that every day, like, and he, like I said, why do we need a little person here?
The step program is designed to target specific violations that are going on traffic-wise in the city of Chana Grove. It pays for itself. It's not only gonna pay for itself, it's gonna generate more revenue than its tried and proven. I've done it in other counties.
I think I just gotta go over one question we're gonna do.
I'm confused too, if you're, what, what you're talking about, you know, cause I'm trying to respond also to the questions. Are you talking about just having a, someone to take the forty hours, Robert?
Yes.
That's what you're talking about?
Right.
And I think.
He wasn't gonna wait.
We're talking two different things. You know, we don't have two officers here most of the time. Occasionally, there is. And a lot of times, one of them's out doing something while one's here doing something. It's not like, like someone's sitting here all day waiting for something to do. There's.
Well, it's like in any company, you have a president who runs the people below him. The officers are the people below him. They're doing the job, bringing in the income. He's making sure of all the administration, all the paperwork with the state, with the city, with the courts. I mean, he's like a president. He's gonna get paid and, and he's, he may put in four days one week, he may put in six days the next week, but you know what? He's not getting paid for that six days the next week. He's getting the flat salary.
I think, I think we're talking about a little something different here. He's talking about maybe only three days this week and three next. Plus, this little town don't need a president. We need a police officer.
No, we need a chief to make sure that officers are in order. That's where we've had our problems before. We've never had a strong chief to make sure the officers were doing their jobs.
Okay, but not working, so he's out of here, though.
And he's.
They're not, Glenn, I'm telling you, I'm not gonna. They're not necessarily assigned.
I guarantee you, he is. I've seen it.
I missed that last, what'd you say?
Two people here at one time, two officers.
Sure, they're so fat. I mean, if I'm here doing paperwork and checking the reports from the weekend and everything, and Robert's out there, he, he come into the office and do his case report that he had to do at the same time I was here of something that he just took care of, which is the same case with, with the other reserve. Yeah, there's two of us here at times, but there's plenty of work for everybody to go around, including me.
And are you talking about like because the car's there, because the car, the second car doesn't go unless there's, yeah.
I do.
He's talking about salary. We're paying two people to be here from eight to four every day.
No.
When, in tech, in your actuality.
Robert was here and then paying up.
But you changed his schedule.
Back to what I was told when I came here, what I wasn't told, that Robert is supposed to work nights all the time. I never knew that.
I didn't know that either.
And when I asked Robert about it, he said, no, that was not the agreement. So I am not gonna require an officer to work nights all the time unless he wants to. I know you've talked about it before where they do that on the railroad, but this is not.
No, I went, I went on the council back when they did business, but they hired an extra policeman for coverage for weekends and evenings. That's what they hired you for.
But I was.
We have two, we own, we approved two policemen, one to work daylight, one to work evenings and weekends.
Nobody told me that.
And I didn't know that either, and I didn't find that anywhere. We asked Robert.
That's what I was approved.
I don't think so. We, we, we hired two officers to work forty, uh, at one point, there was Jenkins and there was Davis working forty hours each a week.
Well, it was evening and Monday light.
No, not necessarily.
Let's go back to when I was here and we had the other two officers. We had a day officer and nobody at night until Thursday. And on Thursday, they overlapped and, and the, the Thursday evening guy would work Friday evening and Saturday, two to ten, and then the other guy would come back in on Sunday and work two to ten, and then they would start over. So we only had, you know, like six to eight hours coverage during the day, Monday, uh, Monday through Wednesday. On Thursday, we had morning till night. On Friday, we had a few hours at night. On Saturday, we had a few hours on Sunday, we had a few hours.
And if I'm not mistaken, they would alternate the weekends. They would switch their hours.
They did, they did, like, and that, that switched on the Thursday. Whoever went in the next week.
You hear exactly what I'm saying. Go to work at the same time.
But we didn't have any coverage at night. That's, you know, I thought you wanted any coverage. No, we didn't. Just Thursday.
We had Friday and Saturday.
Right, right.
Thursday was the only day that you had full twelve-hour days coverage. That's the only day of the week.
Well, that's all you can do with two men.
And then on Friday, we had a few hours Friday evening and a few hours Saturday and a few hours Sunday.
If you take, uh, work in five days, if you put the extra man Saturday and Sunday, then you got three days in the evening, you're gonna be, that's all you can cover with the two men. That's the way we have it.
Well, I don't understand why you wouldn't wanna have more coverage for the whole city every day of the week, and it's not gonna cost you anything.
And that, that, that's what they used to tell me they wanted. They wanted more coverage. They wanted them here more. So we got the reserve program and have the two, you know, in addition to the two paid officers that we've always had.
I think we've never even had as many as eight reserves at one time.
We never had any. We had the two.
That's what we've ever had, yeah.
But the, the culture around us is requiring more too.
Things have changed.
And then, and I remember when we got complaints because we didn't have an officer on when vandalism occurred in the city and then they get to know their schedule. They know exactly when they come in.
Yeah, and that was happening.
Because it was exactly the same hours every day and every week. It was always those hours and that became a problem.
Okay, so basically going back to this thing, we're looking at this F program where we're gonna enhance violations as such.
That's the basic. Enhance means that we're gonna have more coverage and we're gonna be concentrating on the problems facing Chana Grove with especially the insurance and no driver's license violation that we encountered because I've had citizen after citizen come to me every time they're in a penderbender, the guy ain't got no insurance. And his insurance company's got it covered. So I'm trying to rid that here in San Antonio, here in Chana Grove.
And that's what this program's about?
Yes, sir. And we've already got a start on it with the impound program. We've, since we started, there's been a hundred and twenty vehicles impounded that have brought something like fifteen thousand dollars to the city.
I will have to say, everything Mr. Garrett has done, though, I have seen progress and I have seen the city benefit from it, from his suggestion on these programs. I will say that. Um, I think the problem lies unfortunately is I think when you were hired, I think we thought that you were gonna be like the other chiefs where you work the day shift and maintain what went on through the day and then we'd have another officer come in and do evening shift. And that's how it was proposed to us. So in our minds, that's what we were, I didn't believe that.
I was thinking that.
No, I did not believe that.
I said it was part-time for him, that it was part-time.
And he was the chief, he was gonna maintain integrity, the, the schedule of, of Robert. He'd do some work when he could, but he was needing to straighten out the office.
Office, yeah, that's true.
And, and there is a lot of paperwork that comes through this office now that they're writing two hundred and seventy-nine tickets instead of thirty-nine tickets, so.
And I think what, you know, Glenn's wanting somebody here eight to five and it's like.
Sitting at a desk or out at a patrol car.
And, and that's not what that position can't do that. It's like I can't, I, I do stay here, but there's times I need to leave. I'm here at meetings, I have classes, I have different, I don't need to be away as much as he does for things he's doing, but even your job sometimes calls you to be, requires you to be at work at a different time than that eight-to-five.
Well, I think this mentality, yeah, we were, I was under the pressure either.
We, yeah, I mean, it's.
But, because that's how it's always been, I've always seen, like we said, Jenkins, I mean, Davis always worked as chief and then Jenkins worked nights.
But to be honest, to be honest, like Margie said, we did not have so many.
Davis had, Davis never worked as a chief.
Right.
I mean, he was an officer that was just kind of put in the chief position.
Acting as chief.
Because we never had option at the time, yes.
We've never had an administrative chief.
We've never had one with experience.
That's true.
Much less this.
But I mean, as an actual administrative chief working.
We had two peace officers always. We didn't have. And if you remember, Dennis Dunk was the chief administrator of the police department. Because of that reason, but the law only allows that for a certain period of time and then you gotta get some training. And of course, he wasn't gonna do that.
Right.
So we, we either had to hire someone else at the time or make one of them the chief.
And we were giving the title chief.
But they didn't have the title.
And the support still came from Reddick Garson, so. And she's not really, you know, come on as chief administrator when we had our problems and we, Rob.
Yeah, I, I see, I see the picture, but I think that's what was, that's, I guess, the mentality we were thinking. That's how we were, you know, thinking in our minds, how it was gonna work that way. But what I, I see here, if this implement program is not gonna cost the city anything and only profit us, then why not do it? I mean, I see it that way, Glenn. I mean, if he's gonna be our acting administrator and that's his sole purpose in his job and as a part-time person, then this program here will only cover us, will also cover us during the day in patrol where he won't be in that position. He will be doing administrative stuff. That's the way I see it.
I mean, honestly, we have twice as much coverage now, more than that probably, every day almost is covered now. The coverage is wonderful.
Yeah.
And twice as much income than we paid those two officers to be here.
Saturday.
Doing whatever it is they did all day, every day, getting paid tonight.
And we worked those city ordinance violations that we couldn't. We didn't have the main.
The readiness, the, the backup that, you know.
Well, that's my main concern is because, and I know that's my little pet peeve, but I knew that was the whole reason that Dennis, at the time, our ex-mayor, started, wanted a policeman.
We got a chief, we have a chief. We've had several of them.
Yeah.
And they were not, they were, they weren't either.
But I think that was the whole.
Forcement and then the court was implemented to get the revenue.
I forget about that.
You know what I mean?
Right, right, right.
All of that, uh, any fine money was going to the county that our police did.
Right, would you?
So we implemented the court, okay? That's the council did, but.
Well, I understand.
Even if it's a temporary basis to try it out and see.
I, I agree. Well, I would say, let's do it on a pilot program and let's see how it all works and let's see what, how much money we're generating and if it works and this is what this gentleman was told and hired for, then kind of that's the way it is.
Everything else has worked out great, but it's simple and it's.
Well, no, I, I said that.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I have.
And I have to tell you, it takes a huge responsibility off of me. That was something that I had to be accountable for and I, no. You know, and now we have some of the experience that I would have to be, you know, concerning now.
I'd like to make a motion. We gave a list, see if we can do counsel in here and get some more feedback from them. I think they need, they're gonna be the ones in here taking care of this. They need to know what's going on.
Have a motion on the floor to take this to, to the next council members who didn't discuss it. Do I have a second?
How long does it take to implement this round? Does it start?
It'll start tomorrow.
Have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Motion is denied. Do we have a motion to?
I make a motion that we start the implementation of an enhanced enforcement program in the EEP for, can we do a, a trial run for six months and get some numbers to see expense-wise salaries and car expenses and things versus the income that it's bringing in in order to, to see the, the weight of it for a six-month, six-month would be sufficient at least for a trial program?
I can prove it faster than they have it. That's fine.
Okay, for a six-month trial program.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to implement a program, the EEP program for six months.
On the program itself, on the EEP, I will second that. For a six-month trial pilot program. I don't have any doubt that this program will, will not, I mean, I, I have no doubt it's going to work. It's the basis of, and I understand now, which I did not earlier, or maybe I misinterpreted, that the administrator was also gonna, uh, the chief was also gonna serve as an officer. And, you know, that was the way I was.
He does.
Well, I know he does. And he has been. He's helped me many a times. But, um, you know, like we would always have him for a day shift officer and then we'd have other people filling in our reserves and another permanent officer for our evening. Because of that and this is my, the way it was introduced to me is why I.
He, he does all of it.
I know he does. I know that. I know that. But the EEP program in itself, I think is, is, is a good program. I think it would work for the city of Chana Grove and I think it would make money for the city of Chana Grove. The pro, speaking of just the program in general, that's why I second it.
So right now, we have a second on it, to try it for six months. Is there any other discussion? Holes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Holes opposed?
Aye.
Say it to the floor. One against, motion carries. Try it for six months. Next item on the agenda, discuss and consider rear prison district two thousand and sixteen budget. Action needed if you agree with what they have.
If you don't.
If you don't, then what you do?
If you disagree, why do we need action? If you don't.
I don't know what this.
So no action?
No action.
No action. H, consider an act on participation in the CDBG urban county designation program.
Okay, we do that every, we've done that forever.
Yeah.
Uh, but I did get a call from, um, the county, who knows, the police office and it was.
Boy, it's awesome.
Yeah, anyways, they were gonna send me the information on it so that you all could decide on it. I never got it, but I did get it on the agenda for him, so I pulled the resolution from the last two, about three-year period that we did, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen was our last three-year program. And it's time again to either be counted with them and the city has always been counting.
What, what, can you tell me a little bit about this?
It's, it allows the county to, um, count Chana Grove as, uh, participation is serving county and it's for block grants, development programs and stuff. Chana Grove residents have never been able to qualify for any of those programs or grants. However, it doesn't hurt Chana Grove in any way to, to be counted with their county and there may be something that we could benefit from in the future.
And it may also entail buying power as well now, because that's what they're trying to do. Is get it to where we can buy supplies, um, vehicles, just anything, everything is.
So it would benefit us.
It would benefit you in other ways.
Yeah, it would benefit us. To, to, to participate in that, to CDBG urban county designation program.
Do we have a motion on the floor to, uh, be included in the urban county designation, here, kind of, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do I have a second for councilman Liston? Do you have a discussion? Holes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Holes opposed, motion carries, and it was. Marching, will you give us anything to, to report to the county?
Well, basically, uh, we met this past Wednesday, uh, oh, sorry, uh, May first, last week. And, um, they were just going over, um, basic, uh, some of the bills in the House. Supposedly, House Bill thirty-one is gonna lower the state's sales tax, but the Senate hasn't approved it yet. Their, their version of it. Senate has one for lowering the property tax, so, you know, they haven't quite gotten together on that yet. Um.
And on the appraisal?
Well, they just, they were just saying the Senate's, uh, going on the property tax, so I guess the rates maybe.
Yeah, but there's an, also one, there's also another bill on the effective rate.
Okay. Well, they, they were saying, the effective rate, they talked about it at the first meeting I went to. They, they were saying that, I think that one will die. I don't think that one has continued. But then this, this buying board where you can buy police radios, even your insurance, your office supplies, your equipment, that they're wanting to go, the thirteen counties that are in the ACOG grouping, to have them all go together so we can get better discounts and, and, or buying in volume to help out the, the smaller communities in the St. Edward, Yelena, or the Bonnaroo, I mean, La Vermaire, I mean, you know, whatever is, is involved in that. Um, but that was, that was about it, really.
And Uber live?
Well, Uber, as far as San Antonio, uh, is out until after maybe the election. Mencrest and somebody else.
Hollywood.
Hollywood Park, I think, guys where you, if you call Uber from there, they can go into the city if they have a permit. Of course, I don't know if we've had any Uber out here at all.
We don't do that many taxis there, though.
Yeah, I mean, so.
It's so high, or it goes too far, maybe.
They're, they're, they're all, they're running a lot of cities.
Seven dollars or something and your, your driver has to get permitted. But it's basically, it's someone that happens to be heading into town to where you wanna go. You call them up, they connect you, he gets, or he or she gets seven bucks and you ride with them into wherever you're gonna go. At least that's how they would call.
They were trying to get all the towns together, gang up against San Antonio to, uh.
Approve and whatnot.
To bypass their taxi cab ordinance.
You know, if I were like Stop, Mail, or Bar, then that'd be probably straight on foot, you know? You could take a lot of people.
Yeah, of course.
I have a few announcements.
Announcement is.
I have some announcements. One, I wanna remind y'all that, um, uh, May twelfth at six P M. We're gonna administer the oath to the new council elect. It's not council meetings. No city business will be discussed, but we will come here at six P M and administer their oath.
Six.
Uh-huh, and then on June fourth, um, at six P M, before the regular meeting at seven, we're gonna hold an open house celebrating ten years in the building here. And we'll have a few refreshments out. People can visit and, and, uh, socialize a little bit before the meeting at seven.
What's it?
June, June fourth.
Fourth.
Uh-huh, and I've ordered some new siding. Actually, I went and picked it up for twelve-foot long party boards to replace the ones along the bottom where the weed eater and mower has, um, if you've noticed, it's broken up the, the siding on that side over there. Uh, my husband and I went and picked up four, uh, pieces of that and I'm getting the guy out here to put it in, repaint the fascia board and those part, deciding to get it, um, cleaned up. We also have to renew our septic permit and Steve Plaid, who installed that permit, uh, installed that system for us years ago, uh, came out, he's given us the quote, it has to be pumped. The renewal process requires that we have it pumped and have to have risers on it now.
Do you just have that done?
No, I checked with them. I called that S O S and they didn't pump it.
I had to replace it.
Well, I thought they pumped it too at the same time.
I called them to make sure, you know, I, you know, I asked them, did y'all pump it? And they did, they said all they did was they fixed the clog and then they put a camera down and found the break and fixed that break. Um, and they didn't pump it. And anyway, uh, the law now requires us to have some risers where they don't have to dig out and when they need to pump it, they can just bring the hose in and.
Wow.
And, uh, and so Steve Plaid has given us a quote of five hundred and fifty to. And, uh, and so Steve Plague has given us a quote of five hundred, if you can pump it in, put the risers in, and that's a pretty good bid. So he'll be doing that in the next few days if you see anybody out there. Um, and then, uh, I ordered all the signs are here. When Frank Bennett put together that, um, you know, he had a package of our signs that he had taken care of. And, uh, Mike Trager had it for a while. Anyway, I've got all the signs ordered and, uh, we'll be starting to put those in.
And who's gonna do this for us?
Uh, Frank had said he would do them, um, you know, he is gonna do it. He has to do it before he becomes a councilor, so.
Because I thought Mr. Trager said he was gonna do it.
Well, uh, Jimmy told me that he said he would still do it, so I emailed and I have all of it and haven't heard anything back from him, so.
Or has he?
He was working a job and, uh, he was in a truck there.
Anyways, and the other thing is the July council meeting, I guess we'll wait and let the new council members decide that, but it falls on July second and sometimes people have it, want the week off. I don't know. That may, that day may change. But like I said, we'll talk to the new council, um, when they get here, mayor, or you guys and the other two, the new mayor, to see if it will be held on a regular meeting day or maybe the following Thursday. I would figure if y'all have plans, that you should be thinking about that. And, uh, so that meeting may, may stay the same and may not. It's just, uh, we'll see.
We'll take care of it next week.
We got new flags up today. We just got the big ones and the flags replaced. Lower away.
It was so windy today. I couldn't hold it. It was taking it out of the place.
Yeah, they didn't have to.
I didn't wanna be in the time of the flag, so I let it go.
We still have that flag made once since we've been back.
Have they?
Right when we came back, we put new ones up.
Okay, cause I know at one time that was so.
Yeah, they were pretty good. Yeah, they're out there.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Now, these are bigger. We ordered bigger ones and we're hoping maybe that might help.
What do we got from that, uh?
Carrot, um, carrot top, carrot.
Oh, I don't know.
I don't know.
We bought some different places.
Betsy's flag's very expensive. Then we went through American flag.
Do they last any longer though?
No.
Not really?
These are like, I've, I've ordered some called Hercules. They're supposed to be indestructible and they.
Was shredded too.
As they stay out all, all the time. This has been the same flag here for thirty years since I've been here.
Oh, wow.
I took it home and washed it.
Wow.
But, um.
Betsy Ross.
Yeah. No, I, I didn't get any. Well, you kept care of it. That's good.
Do I have a notice?
Uh, make a motion that we adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion, Mary Lynn, from councilman Holiski.
Second.
And second comes from Craig. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're going out.